Well, welcome. It is the season. This year especially for what I've always said is the most important seat in the Milford Election School Committee. We have a number of people. And as always, we're having them all on. First individually like tonight. And then as a candidate's night, we'll have them all together. As always, I'll never ask you to vote for a specific candidate. Not my place. But I will beg you to vote and get to know the five candidates. There'll be a number of opportunities. Everything from the six people who watch this show to the senior center, to the citizens from Milford. There'll be the Town Crier Show with Kevin and Al. There's a lot of opportunities to see people and see what they stand for. Because remember, especially for those parents out there. When you hit high school, you'll get lucky to get a couple hours a day with your children. The people that you're going to elect for school committee are going to dictate six to eight hours of your children's lives. So please take the time, even if it's only a few minutes here and there. Get to know the people that you feel most comfortable with and vote. So let's start with an introduction.
Hi, Al. I'm glad to be back on the show. My name is Tarek Miranda. Born and raised in Milford, and I'm running for school committee.
Tarek, I always start the show with the same question. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
All right, Al. For me, that's pretty simple. You should vote for me because I've recently graduated from the school system in 2014. So I have a good connection with the administration, the faculty. And I understand now more what the teachers would say. And now I truly understand when they say they needed extra resources or extra help. So I have, I feel like being in that system for the longest time, I can better apply that to what they need. And I'm from Milford.
Now, we turn around and we say there's challenges that are going to come your way as school committee member. What do you think the three biggest challenges that you would face are?
The three biggest challenges I would face would be probably integrating with the school committee. I've watched their meetings. I see what they do. And I'm just going to have my opinion heard. And they might not like that on some occasions. And other occasions, they might love it. Getting to know everyone. There's new faculty and administration the past few years. So getting to know them and working with them might hopefully isn't a challenge, but it could be a challenge. And I think another issue or a challenge I would face. I can't think of another challenge I would face.
Well, you're in a unique position in my mind. You're young, so you're not, you know, when I think of Milford High, yeah, I'm thinking of year one, 1974, you know, 45 years ago.
Right.
You know, you've got the perspective of somebody who just graduated.
Right.
Certainly less than 45 years ago.
Yeah, 2014.
Number two, you know, one of the biggest demographics in our town, the Portuguese Brazilian population.
Yeah, and I feel like a lot of them are starting to struggle. That demographic's starting to struggle more than they have in the past.
How so?
I, well, when I, I wouldn't say came here. I was born here. So I guess my parents made it, they made it the objective is you go to school, play a sport, you do well in both. If you don't do well in both, you don't have TV, you don't have video games.
You embarrass the family.
The family name is everything. So don't embarrass the family. And growing up, it was always like that. I always had to get good grades. I always had to be above average. And I feel like the parents now of that demographic, they aren't as stringent with those as they used to be. Like our parents were.
Well, it was hard because I remember, not that I ever got in trouble, you know, my father, God rest his soul, never put a hand to me. But if I had embarrassed the family, you know, if I did something wrong in school, it was do whatever you want. Give me detention, you know, beat me, do whatever. I can't say that in today's day and age, the joke of, you know, go ahead, beat me. But just don't tell my father.
Exactly.
Because the look he would give me would hurt more, you know, that you let down the family. But it seems like our teachers today are not just being called to educate our kids. In some ways, they're being called to raise them.
And I think that's wrong. And like I said earlier, the parents aren't pushing that for that certain demographic. I certainly believe everything starts in the home. And if there are problems there, then 99% of the time, there'll be problems outside of the home. And it's just by nature, nature and nurture of being raised.
But how do you get, I mean, my mother and father were incredibly supportive, but had no idea what to do. You know, they were told, you have to support your son. My father put on his jacket and his hat. And he'd go down to the high school or whatever, sit in the audience and have no clue what was going on.
Right.
You know, as they talked about college and what you need to get in and what. My dad didn't understand a word, but he knew that he was supposed to be there if he wanted to support my, his son.
Right.
You know, my life. And I got to admit, when I look out, you know, in the audience and saw him there, knowing what he was going through, it did have an impact. But how do you get that message to the parents today?
It's hard. My parents did it, and I appreciated it. I know they didn't know. They understood what they were saying, but they didn't really get it. And so I applied to college on my own. I had Mr. Bontempo help me and my guidance counselor. But how do you get that message to the parents? I think it's just a change, the times have changed. And it's just, you have to really reach out to them and speak to them. And it's probably gotten harder because a lot of them are working these crazy hours for little, for pennies. And they're working two, they're working double shifts or two jobs. And they work from 9:00 AM till 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM. And when they want to enforce it, they want to. But how can they if they're not home? That's, I think that's the real problem. Because my parents, although they were divorced, they purposely worked separate shifts. So one could always be with us no matter what. Or have our grandparents with us. So we always had that reinforcement from mom, dad, or grandparents.
You know, and it's funny because you mentioned that. My mom came to Milford in '41. My father in '46. And they worked different times of the year. My father worked during the construction time. And then the winter, when he was laid off, my mother went to work as a drill press operator at Draper's. You know, so again, to them, they worked. Soon as I went to school, that was it. My father got a job at General Motors so he could work all year.
Yep.
And my mom worked at Draper's all year. So there was a work ethic. They never had to tell you about it, but you could see it.
Right. And when I, I see the work ethic that my parents did, working those odd hours just to make sure one of them was always with us. And when I, my freshman, February of my freshman year of high school, I got my first job at Dairy Queen. I worked there for six and a half years. I worked there and I worked at the school, for the school system at one point. I was doing both jobs. And then I got my first internships. And I was still at Dairy Queen and working my internships full time and going to school. So I guess that just was part of me, seeing that growing up. If you see it, you appreciate it. Because that's, you understand what it is to work for the dollar.
Well, it's hard not to appreciate, to see how hard, especially mom. A drill press operator. You know, I mean, I had friends who worked there as we got older in summer jobs. And they said, your mother's an animal. She shows, she's a machine. She shows up, starts working, stops for 15, 20 minute lunch. And because they were working piecework.
Right.
So there was no such thing as taking time off. To her, she should be making more money.
Right. It's our parents mentality.
And get home and then go work the garden.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's hard to explain to people. You know, and how many times I remember my father sleeping on the benches in a hockey rink so I could play hockey at 2:00 in the morning. Because I couldn't drive back then.
Right.
You know, we'd get home at 4:30 or so. He had to go to work at 5:00. So he would take his coat, sleep on the benches. You know, when you saw that, disappointing them was kind of...
That's the worst thing in the world. The one time I disappointed my parents, we were in church. It was quiet. I ran down the aisle. And we sat in the first row. It was the most disappointing look I'd ever had from my dad.
You know, with me was Spruce Street School. I got a red four in conduct. My mother and father had no idea what that meant, but they knew it wasn't good. They took the day off, didn't say a word, but showed up first thing the next morning. I mean, luckily, the teacher said, no, he's fine. He just talks too much. And I was like...
There's a reason why you're on TV, right?
Now, fundamental question that keeps coming up. Are kids getting a good education in Milford?
I say kids are getting a good education in Milford, yes.
Why?
Because you can see it, most of us, most kids at least get into school and, or they decide to pursue a trade. Which if their, if their plan was to pursue a trade, maybe Milford isn't the spot for them today. But hopefully in the future, we can offer them more than just getting ready for college. I feel, I felt like I was ready. And I was just, like I said, a little B to above average student. And even my, I have many friends who were CD students just because of just laziness, not because of the bad education. And now they're, they're off in school. They're studying to be nurses and doctors. And Milford got them ready. They just, they just chose not to do well. That's completely different.
So where did you go to school?
I went to Wentworth Institute of Technology.
And what did you study there?
Computer engineering.
Were you ready for it?
Oh, yeah. I was ready. It was hard. It's a lot, it's a lot different. But being on my own, and I wouldn't say on my own, but having grown up with the way I did, I had very good time management skills. So I saw others struggle and I didn't. I always, I always had a schedule. I struggled a few classes. I probably could have done better in, but I did it. And that's, that's what mom and dad wanted. That's what they told me.
My hat's off to you because I struggled the first time. All of a sudden, I got, I have a first test. You get totally cross and it's like, wait a minute, I have to study to get an A? They don't just hand those out?
No, no, it's a little different there.
Yeah, and took calculus and found out that for 90% of the class, this was from private schools. This was review for them. It was new for me.
Right. And so in Milford, they, as you mentioned calculus, they offer Calc One, Calc Two AP courses. They have over 20 AP classes they offer for the students. That, if they offer it, and a lot of this, most of the students, I can't remember the number exactly, a little over 60, around 50% of the students get, get college credit towards those classes. And if they're not, and because they're scoring high enough on the AP exams. And if they're not getting college credit towards those classes, they still learned a lot. Because those classes are rigorous. Those are rigorous courses. And it's, and you have to get approved to get into them. So it's not, you can't just say, I want it. You have to get the teacher to sign off and your guidance counselor to sign off. So it's not just, I want to take that class. As opposed to kids who can take the easy way out, who can just pick all the lowest level classes and be done with it.
But now, you went to Wentworth.
Yes.
Is that your first choice?
Uh, no.
Where else did you apply?
I applied to BU Northeastern Harvard.
Not the easiest schools to get into.
So I got into, I got into Wentworth, I got into Suffolk, I got into Worcester State, I got into UMass Lowell, and I got into UMass Amherst. And I got rejected, I got waitlisted at BU. I got rejected at Northeastern and rejected at Harvard. Harvard was a reach. Like Harvard was a dream.
I was going to say Harvard's a bit...
It's a dream. It never hurt, right?
But you got into almost all the schools you wanted.
Yeah.
Especially UMass. I mean, I've been amazed. Because back, back in the old days, when we walked uphill to the classes both ways, you know, all kidding aside, UMass was a safety school for everybody. You know, to go to Amherst, you just applied. That way you knew you didn't have to say, do you want fries with that order? But I've been absolutely amazed over the decades.
They've done a fantastic job. The Globe came out with an article about the current president and what he's done. I don't remember his name. And I was reading the comments on the, online and on the Globe's article. And it's saying how UMass in Massachusetts is still seen as a safety school by, to a lot of people because of its, because of its...
Harvard, Brown, I mean, Yale, you start looking around at...
Our area, I guess, it might still be a safety school depending on who you are and what you're applying for. But the rest of the country holds UMass Amherst as a very prestigious educational school in the Northeast, in the country.
Well, I think a lot of it too is the whole economics. I mean, I was amazed when I graduated Holy Cross, it was 6,200.
Wow.
Now, my mom was making 11 grand. That was her annual salary for killing herself. Dad was union, so he was making 18. So it was still a huge chunk.
It's a 50 figure, 50% income.
And I kept saying, it can't continue. It just can't keep going up that way.
Well, it did.
And now, I remember when my Emily graduated in 14, the last check I wrote, I remember celebrating. Because it was the last $5,000 check. I had to write one every month. You know, and you sit there and say, my God, what am I doing? You know, if I hadn't helped her, she would have had a quarter million dollars on her back to start.
That's terrible. How do you start off life like that?
Well, that, so a lot of people are saying, wait a minute. Not that UMass is inexpensive.
Right, it's what is it, 35 something?
30 grand by the time you're done. But if you could graduate with the same BS for 100,000 versus 200...
You're picking 100 any day of the week.
And, you know, how do kids now graduating even start?
You better hope you have a good paying job. I got lucky. I went into STEM, pays well. And so I'm just, I have a, I have a two and a half year plan to pay off my loans.
Oh, really?
It's like 85 grand, but...
85,000?
85,000, yeah.
See, that amazes me because when I graduated, I mean, I had $32.80 in my pocket. Right? But my house, the first house I bought was 72.
I wish.
Well, you have more student loan.
Than you did in your first house.
And I didn't need a car because Waters gave me a car. And I didn't have to spend much on expenses because they paid for all my meals and everything when I traveled. But you know, I look at the kids today and 100,000 dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's low. It's, the sad part is it's kind of 80 to 100, I hear, is on the low end if you go to private school.
Yeah, well, that's 50%.
That, yeah, it's 50%. I have, I know some people, I know, I have a few friends who probably around 200. But they're at least studying to be doctors and hopefully they can figure it out.
Yeah, but even then...
It's a lot of money.
God bless them if they want to be MDs and they're going to graduate seven years after you with half a million dollars worth of debt or more.
Probably more at that point. It's just, I don't know. My suggestion is to everyone, you go into the state's A to B program. The state, the state mass transfer, it's a state, it's a program by the state. You do a, you get your associate in two years at a community college. And depending on your GPA, you can, you can go to the other state schools from the community college. If you have a three, everything transfers and you have tuition freeze. You have a two, five, everything transfers, but you don't have a tuition freeze. I forget what the two is. So they have these different tiers.
But tuition was three grand. It wasn't terrible.
Well, it's better, it's, well, it's a way to save some money.
No, it's great. It's not, you still got to pay the 15,000 for the room and board, no.
Well, that's, maybe we have to stop living at schools. I don't know. If, if, if the end goal is to save money, don't live at school. If that's the end goal, to just get your degree, just don't live at school. I shouldn't have lived at school. I'd owe 30 instead of 80. You know, we make, I made that conscious decision when I was 18 by myself. I made that decision. I knew what I was going to owe the moment I started and the moment I graduated. And I'm exactly on plan. Some people don't understand that.
Now, we look at the Milford High School because that's where everybody focuses on.
Absolutely.
And there's a lot of people who are worried that because of the immigrant population, their kids are going to be held back. What would you say to them?
I don't, it doesn't make sense. Why, why should I hold you back?
Because the teacher's spending all the time trying to teach you to speak English and...
But they have separate classes for those kids. So they can't really be holding you back if they're not in the same class together. I'd understand if you had a class that was 50% kids who didn't speak English and 50% kids just like us, people like us who spoke English fluently. Yes, I could completely understand that argument because that teacher will take away time to help those students understand.
But is that real? I mean, does that happen?
No, I haven't seen it. I've probably had maybe one or two in my classes. But that's throughout four years. And you maybe have one or two kids who really, really can't understand it. But then they get the extra, but once the teacher figures it out, they get the extra, hopefully they get the extra reinforcements they need. And they get pulled out of that class, their schedules redone. And now they have another English class to take, ELL class, ESSA.
So you didn't feel that it held you back at all?
Absolutely not, no. Not at all.
Now, as we start looking, you mentioned, and this is, transparency, I'll tell you, it's a pet peeve of mine, that we do well for kids going to college. Then I think back, my father had his four years in the Alveas. You know, he got his four years of school, came here. If you put him in an organic chemistry class, he wouldn't do well. He's not academically inclined. But put a tool in that man's hand, he was an artist. What he could do with his hands just dumbfounded me as to how he had that much skill.
Can you do it?
No. I have all his tools. When he passed away, he left me all his tools. I look at him and I say, okay, you're supposed to be able to do things. And they look back at me and they say, no. But what are we going to do? Because the VOTAC schools were set up.
Right.
You know, when I was, when I was a kid in Milford High, if you're going to college in eighth grade, you decided you went to Milford High. If you wanted to do a trade, you went to Blackstone. But today, to get into Blackstone, you got to be in the top 10 or 15% of the academic class.
Which is wrong, I believe. So I have a lot of friends who went to BVT. A lot of friends who went there. And when I tell them these things, I mean, this was nine years ago when we had to decide MHS or BVT. Yeah, nine years ago, that's when we had to decide. A lot of my friends were not in the top 15th percentile. And the ones who did go there, did it because they knew they weren't going to college. They learned a trade. One's an electrician, one's a dog groomer. I forget what they all do, but one, they're successful. Right now, they've been working for a few years. They have no debt like me. And they're, they're ahead of the, they're ahead of the curve. I don't think the straight schools, the vocational trade schools should look at just the top 15 percentile. I think Milford needs to have a stronger say in who gets accepted. Because they were, they were, those schools were set for a reason. They were made for, to help...
People like my father.
Exactly. Help them. And they're doing them a disservice today. It's wrong.
But yet, we're limited as to what we can offer in Milford High.
Right.
Because by law, we can't, can't compete with BVT.
So either we have to have more say, or the law has to change so that we can compete with BVT. Or we find another vocational school that's more favorable towards us.
Yeah, but we can't. I mean, for us to get out of the consortium that does BVT, all 12 other towns have to say, we'll pay Milford's share, let them go.
Right.
That ain't going to happen.
We're the big one.
That, that isn't going to happen.
Exactly. So that's, so it's...
So can we add programs? I mean, what do we do at Milford High to help the kids who aren't going to college and couldn't get into BVT?
You can add them to a certain extent. Like, like you said, we can't compete. So basically, what we can offer is just the fundamentals of carpentry or the, of being a mechanic. That's what we can offer, but we can't really go further than that. We're limited by state law.
Now, I mean, I've seen them get creative. Like, we have an in with the local car dealer. I mean, not that Kevin Mean wouldn't help kids in Milford anyway.
He's a good guy.
But Mike Walsh is there.
Right.
And I think he's taken on some kids as interns.
Probably. I haven't, I haven't talked to Mike much since that program started. But I saw on the news and it was a great thing. And Mike definitely had some say in what was going on.
And then we've got the hotel.
I think that's great. Because that's what we need. We need more things like that. Maybe stuff that BVT doesn't offer. That's what we can expand on. That's the loophole.
Isn't there a bank in the middle of, I walked...
There is.
I walked down to the cafeteria for the special needs dance. And there was a bank in the middle of the hall.
Yes, Milford Federal opened up a branch right, right at, right outside the cafeteria.
You know, it's funny because back '70, Milford Fed offered a special student account where you could have your little bankbook.
Yep.
And have virtually no money in it. You know, because I didn't have any money.
Yeah, .32.
It built. I got up to a few dollars by the time I was done. But to this day, I haven't forgotten. Milford Fed is still my bank. You know, here it is 50 years later. And I still do almost all my banking at Milford Fed because they helped me when I first started.
Well, that's how it is. Someone helps you, you help them. And it's a, it just keeps going off one of, each other.
One of the areas that seems to be getting a lot of attention is school choice.
Right.
What do you think the real issues are?
If we have a lot of kids choosing out, is it two to one, if I'm not mistaken? Two, 200 out, 100 in, something, it's around that? I think we have to, that's less than, that's less than 15 kids a grade. Is it a problem? Yes, financially, it's a problem. Now, now, how do we fix it? We have to find the underlying reasons why these kids are choosing out. Are the kids choosing to? Are the parents choosing to? That's, I think that's what it comes down to first. We have to see, are the kids choosing to choice out or the parents? Because if it's the parents and it's, if they think the school isn't good enough, then I believe it's a perception problem that we have. If it's the kids who are choosing to choice out, then it could be bullying, harassment, something of that sort. I would assume it's something of that sort. My brother was bullied for a few years in the school system. Stuck it through.
Weren't we all at one point, I mean...
But some get it worse than others, especially in today's digital age.
Yeah, I guess that's true. Yeah, I guess that's true, because once we went home, I was back in the Heights with my friends.
Right. You didn't hear anything.
Yeah.
And that's how I grew up too. I didn't have a phone until freshman year of high school. We'd, we'd go to school, we'd go to class, have our fun, and leave and walk home together. A lot of my friends lived up at the Heights. We'd walk up there, play soccer on the, to the basketball courts or the tennis courts, or go to the Portuguese club's field and play there when we could. Now it's completely different, and especially my brother, my brother being a dancer and finally coming out as gay, that did not help him, that did not help with the bullying in his life.
Is it still a big issue at high school level?
Yeah, you get made fun of.
Really?
It's terrible. It's terrible. But not to your face often, but people say it behind, it's, it's like, it's the worst thing in the world. I hate it.
What can we do?
Really, it, it's just a certain subset of kids who just don't get it. They, they think, they, they, they truly look down on people like that, and it's, it's, I don't know how to fix it. It's just one of those things that you only, you learn by growing up.
You hope it's getting better.
I believe, oh, I definitely believe it's gotten better. That's, I can tell you that, because it used to be much worse when I was younger. Now, I guess things are changing. Everything's more progressive, you know? And that's really changed people's perspective towards things. People with mental illnesses, people who are LGBTQ, that, everything's changed. I, I don't care what, what, what you are. You are you. You are a, you are a human being. I'm not gonna judge you by what you decide to do.
Yeah, we always had one basic judgment. If you were Milford, you were okay. I mean, I always called Water Street the Great Uniter. Because, you know, we had our rivalries, the Heights did, with Luby Ave, with the Plains. You know, they were just different areas of town, and you made fun of them because they were Italian. They made fun of you because you were Portuguese.
We make fun of each other. To this day, we still make fun of each other for those things.
But it wasn't serious.
It was friendly. Friendly banter.
Because the minute we went over Water Street to go down to Hope Dale for the band concerts, you took your hat, you turned it around, and if anybody messed with a Luby Ave kid, wait, he bleeds Milford red.
Right.
You know, or the girl from the Plains is Milford.
Right.
Now they're family.
It's, yes.
You know, so you knew it wasn't, you know, I think the biggest thing was when you heard a new joke.
Yeah.
I had to get to my Italian friends quick, because otherwise they would have heard it and made it Portuguese. But when it really came down to it, if we were down in Hope Dale and somebody picked on one of the kids from Milford, it didn't matter where they were from at that point.
Family, it's family.
Until we came back over Water Street at the hill, then, okay, get back to Luby Ave.
And to this day, like I said, we, the Portuguese make fun of the Brazilians, the Brazilians make fun of the Italians. It's just, it's all fun and games.
And the Portuguese and Brazilian is.
We're the, we're brothers.
I mean, at the end of the day, you know, you make fun of the accent, right?
Yes.
And they make fun of the language being Germanic and, I mean, the Brazilian language, let's face it, it's so much more beautiful and flowing.
It is sad.
You know, it is. We gotta admit it. But, you know, when you hear Bon Jour, it's still, to a Portuguese, I can't deal with Rio and Bon Jour.
Oh, no.
It's like it's dia.
Yeah, I get it. I completely get it.
Really harmful, because when, like I say, when you went over the hill, they were family. Now, what do we do? How do we deal with, because it's costing us half a million bucks a year? How do you deal with school choice out?
Like I said, we have to find out why they're choosing out. And I know a few years ago, there was a survey, it was an anonymous survey, giving out to parents who have school choice their kids out. I haven't been able to get the results of that survey. The, well, the results were just words, bullying, harassment. So there's probably twenty, thirty different things. You don't know how much they weighed on this, on why they chose out, or how often that was the reason why the kids were choosing out.
Well, I mean, the other thing we kept hearing is that Woodland, parents would go up to Woodland and see.
Trailer. I, I get it, Woodland.
Now, all of a sudden, now, it can be years before you're gonna feel it.
Right.
But anybody that goes to Woodland and doesn't admire what we offer, isn't living in reality.
It's one of the most up-to-date newest schools on the eastern seaboard. You can't compete with, you can't, you can't compete with Woodland.
No. And hopefully, once kids start, you know, it's like, once we lost the kids out of the fourth, fifth grade, you're never getting them back. Because they start, I won't say never, but it's very difficult to pull them back. Because they start making their friends, and they start becoming used to their schools.
Right.
And to now yank them out is gonna be difficult. So hopefully, Woodland will help us.
Yeah. And it's, it's beautiful. I've been there, I've been multiple times. It's just miraculous what money can buy.
Well, when you get to that end of it, let's talk about ELL and SPED. What do you think of our programs?
From what I've heard, from a lot of people I know and best buddies, Cara de Gregorio, she, I know she's very big into it, and she's traveled across the country for Milford and best buddies, so God bless her. From what I've heard from her and Jen Walsh and people, and the teachers in the ELL and SPED program, I, I've only heard great things. I've never really interacted with it myself. I was always busy working or sports or some of that, but the, the kids in the SPED program, a few of them would sit with us at lunch. Didn't matter. Talk to them. Humans, we're nice. Like, why would he kick you away? There's no point. They would sit, they'd, some of them would sit down with us and have lunch with us every day. See them in the hallways. They knew my name, I knew their name. Say hi, shake his hand, or high five normally. So from what I see, they're doing a great job.
Now, as we start looking, we've changed the way we budget a decade ago. Many towns hand the school committee a fixed amount of money, and they say, run your school. The problem we ran into years ago was that the SPED rules kept going up and up, and the costs kept skyrocketing.
Right.
And if I hand the school a hundred bucks and say, deal with it, people sometimes don't understand that the SPED and the ELL programs are there by law.
Right.
So those have to come first.
Correct.
Any money left over goes to the typical kids. So we changed it in Milford, where the bonds for new schools are paid for by the town. The healthcare, which, you know, as you know, has gone up six, eight percent many years.
A year, year over year. It's terrible.
We pay for that out of the town budget. And then we pay the net amount of SPED and ELL. So we take and say, what did you spend last year? What are you gonna spend this year? And we fund that separately from all the rest of the.
The school budget.
The school budget.
Right.
And the school budget has to be two point something percent. Now, by the time you add up all the factors, yeah, it's four, five percent every year, but.
Right.
They really have no control over SPED and ELL. They have no control over medical. What do you think of that system, the way we budget it?
I think it's good. You can clearly see where the breakdown is and how it's separated. There's gonna be people who don't like it, always. But I think it's a good system. That's probably, that's definitely fairer to everyone. Because like you said, if there's, if you give them a hundred dollars, one year they could spend thirty-two, then the next year, they give them another hun, now you give them a hundred-two dollars, but now they're spending forty. You're losing money on the regular kids. And so I, I like how they do it. I, I understand it, and I think it makes sense.
Are we spending enough money on our schools?
On the students of the schools?
It's all one.
I think so. Our budget increases every year mainly due to the typical two, three percent, though, not, I wish it was two, three percent.
Well, no, the, the typical budget, you know, the non-SPED ELL.
Right.
Is two point something percent.
Right. I think that's, that's, so we're keeping up with everything. And this, when you put in the SPED and ELL and everything else, like you said, the health insurance, that's when it becomes.
Oh, God, it's probably five, six, or seven percent.
Exactly, exactly. So when you look at just the school, yeah, we are. And maybe, maybe we're not spending the money wisely. Maybe we could be more efficient with the money we have. That's, that's what I would like to do. It's one of the things I would like to do, is become, not waste a dollar.
How do you figure out when you're wasting a dollar? I mean, we've got a group in Milford calling for a general audit of the school. Now, we have a review every year. The town accountant, I shouldn't say accountant, because it's not good Dr. Brown, but we hire somebody to go through and do kind of a overall review.
Right.
But there are people in Milford who want an in-depth audit. Would that scare you?
No.
Why?
I believe, even though we're not as efficient as I'd like to be with the money, we're still not doing anything illegal or wrong with the money. So by all means, give a general audit, if that's what they want.
What do you think would happen after a general audit?
You'll find some money that's being spent.
Paying too much for toilet paper at Woodland or some of the little things.
Or, or why do we have some, there's two schools, uh, Stacey, not Stacey, Woodland and Stacey, yes, Woodland and Stacey. If I'm not mistaken, one has, I don't know if it's janitors or cafeteria staff. One has, I would say, a twelve cafeteria staff, the other has five, the janitors, not staff, not cafeteria staff. Now, why does this, now, why do two schools with the same amount of students that they have to take care of have a significantly different amount in staff? If the school's the same, same amount of students, same size, just about, why do you, why does one have two times the amount of staff? Maybe that's what we'll find. Maybe that's where we're spending money wrong. Or it could be toilet paper, or we're getting a bad deal on paper. Who knows?
But, but you don't believe there's any malfeasance or any?
No, not at all. Nothing illegal.
No, no tens of millions of dollars going to the send the school committee to Bermuda fund?
No, no, none of that. If there was, trust me, in Milford, you'd know about it by now.
If we got a little extra money, what would you like seeing it spent on?
I'd like to see it spent on the average student, because the, the kids who excel will always excel. The kids who do poorly get that extra push from teachers and administration to do better. You know, so then we leave these big chunk of kids in the middle, defend for themselves, and just, they're good kids. They just don't, they need that extra push, but they're not bad enough to get the extra push from the teachers, and they're not excelling enough to just be saying, we're gonna take all AP classes.
Well, you're talking academically. When you say bad, just they're not.
Oh, no, not bad students, bad, yeah, sorry.
Well, no, no.
Bad, poor choice of words.
I, I remember when I first came back and I got involved with the schools, they referred to the bad kids, and I had no idea who they meant.
That poorly performing would have been better.
Yeah, but it's just, it made me laugh, because that's when I found out I was one of the bad kids. I came from the Heights and I, you know, when I first went to schools in Milford, I didn't know why they spoke that funny language. Everybody I knew spoke Portuguese. Well, why is it there, I'm going outside and they're speaking some kind of different language? I didn't know. I was, I'm glad they never told us we were bad kids, because if they gave us that label, we might have.
Been bad kids.
Been bad kids.
Right.
So can you think of any major improvements you'd like to see? If you got on the school committee, your life will be four. The world is four. You need four votes to pass anything on the school committee.
Right.
Is there any program that you would try and get three others to join you with?
One of them would be, this one specifically towards the ELL students. I think we need, I, I honestly think we need to just put them together, and they are together a lot of the time. But let's just keep them. I know, I know, I know twenty, thirty years ago in Milford, you had the kids who spoke Portuguese in a class together, and then they learned math in Portuguese while learning English from that same teacher, and you would stay there for eight hours. Your entire day was that, until your English was good enough to go out into the world of Milford High or fifth grade, or whenever it happened. Today, that, back then, it used to take two years to do that. Now it's taking us four, five, according to Mr. McIntyre. And he repeated, and he says this repeatedly at the school committee meetings. So, so why could we do it twenty, thirty years ago in two years, two to three years? Now it's taking us four to five years. What, what happened? Yeah, that's what I'd like, I'd like to figure out what happened there, and most likely implement that if legal.
But you think it's social? I mean, I remember, we used to volunteer to read when we were on the school councils.
Right.
And my darling bride went in, because I was sick one day, and they thought I was gonna read, so they put me in a class that was all Portuguese. So she went in, and she immediately looked around and said, oh, you fakers. She pointed to four kids, she says, I've been at your house. You speak English. And it, it kinda hit that the kids liked being around the Portuguese kids. So they weren't pushed, they weren't pushed to get out. So I wonder if some of it is, you know, let's, let's face it. Milford got a lot of Portuguese residents because it was comfortable.
Yeah, it felt like home.
My grandfather came. He spoke no English. You know, somehow he had the thirty-two dollars and eighty cents in his pocket when he left Portugal. And he moved to Milford because they needed labor, but there are a lot of parts of the country that needed laborers.
Right, but this area of the United States is mini, mini Portugal.
And they had the culture, and it made them feel better.
Exactly, and you go where you'll feel accepted.
So I wonder if some of the kids aren't just more comfortable?
They definitely are, but if they wanna grow, we have to show them that they have to leave. You, you have to leave and sprout and grow wings.
Well, yeah, because if you went to Wentworth and only spoke Portuguese or barely spoke English.
I'd still be in school. I'd owe a million dollars. I'd owe a million dollars before I graduated.
We're talking about School Long Range Educational Plan. Have you seen it?
No.
You're not the only one.
Haven't, I asked for this last year. I think every, I think every candidate asked for it last year.
I know every FinCom member asked for it, and we were promised it would come this last fall. I'm still waiting. Now, in the paper, it talked about a long-range building plan.
Right, I've, I've heard of that.
Now, does it make sense to you that we have a building plan before an ed plan?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I think we need a thirty-year goal, twenty-year goal, and then where does that building come in in that twenty, thirty-year goal? That makes more sense to me.
Well, that's what we, you know, when you think of Brookside.
I'm not here to just spend money to spend money.
Well, when you think of Brookside and the last program, we had a long-range ed plan that lasted fifteen years. And it ended with the building of Woodland, but we knew where each building fit in the long-range ed plan.
Right. See, now they're asking for a building plan, but no long-range plan. They, they should be, they should be together. They should be one.
Okay, because that, I mean, I'm stuck trying to figure out, I mean, the next school is probably the high school.
I can see it.
You know, now, I can't see building a new one.
Right.
Two hundred million dollars? I don't think that, that, it's not even the money, although the money scares me.
Right, I think it's because we would lose a lot of space, I've heard.
Well, the problem is, where would you build a new one? With Woodland, we were able.
You'd have to build it on the back fields. Now, practices for the high school teams, that's gonna get a little messy. But that's where you'd have to build it, and then you'd have to put the fields in the front, and then you'd have more turf fields where the current high school is after it gets demolished.
Yeah, I can just imagine how well it's gonna go over to rip down the new football stadium that we just built.
No, you'd have practice fields in the front.
Oh, okay.
On the, where the current school is, and in the back, where the grass fields are, you'd have the school.
See, I can see spending a little bit extra by building it in stages. You know, one thing that would, would make sense to me is you say, if I need more room, build a new wing. Move the A wing people into that wing. Re, you know, redo the A wing, move B wing into A.
The hallways are enormous. They're twenty feet, they're twenty, they're twenty feet apart, twenty feet wide. I think, if you, if, you have to decide what makes more sense. Are we gonna renovate it and do one wing at a time? Or if you're gonna build a whole new one?
Yeah, I just can't see building a new one. The Milford High School that I went to was, still there is a bunker. It's solid cement walls.
Taken that out of there.
I mean, yes, you have to rewire it, yes, you have to refurb it, but it's a bunker.
Right, but also, at the end of the day, sometimes renovating it costs more than building a new one.
Could be.
I think the biggest factor would be is that by state law, we'd lose space, because the state will be putting some, the state will be putting money towards it, of course. And I know that's why Woodland is almost at capacity.
That's a good point, because now, ever since Newton South with the two hundred million dollars.
That was a, that was a mess.
It's gorgeous.
I mean, it's beautiful, it is, but getting everything.
Got a budget, because we go there for Special Olympics, and the floors and.
It's perfect.
It's beautiful.
Right.
I keep saying, well, what happens ten, twenty years in, when you have to start renovating this place? You'd best have a good budget. But, you know, again, as I start thinking, boy, I'd love to see a fieldhouse. I go to places like Shoesbury and other towns.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
The fieldhouse is gorgeous.
And maybe some parents take kids out because they don't like the high school. They don't like how it looks. They think it's outdated. There's too many factors that would make you want to build a new school as opposed to renovating it. And there's also many factors making you wanna renovate it over building a new one. It's a, it's a long, it's a long debate that has to be talked about.
So now.
In public, transparency, it's important.
About, okay, you get it on the school committee. You gotta get people to listen to you.
Right.
How you gonna do that? Because you gotta get at least three of them, if you want anything approved.
Just talk to them. I'm gonna talk to them, and I'll tell them why I think it's the right thing to do, why I believe it. And with the growing population, the. And with the growing population, the growing Hispanic Portuguese population in town, I represent them better than any other member on that school committee could. And hopefully, that would be the turning point in making them listen to me. Because I firmly believe I represent the, the entire school system, all the kids in the school district. I might have grown up with Brazilian Portuguese parents, but very Americanized.
Now, we just spent as a town, three-quarters of a million dollars putting together our own SWAT team, or whatever they're calling it.
Right, yeah.
What do you think of that?
I think in this current environment that we live in in the world, it's probably a great, it's a great idea. I voted for it at town meeting. I'd vote, I'd vote for it again, unless things drastically change and school shootings stop. Just last week, did you get the alert at the high school, there was threats of a shooter. Scary. I'm happy we have this. They can be there faster than anyone.
Well, I think that was the key point. They got my vote when they said it's forty-five minutes from when we sound the alarm to when the regional SWAT team.
Can show up.
Can show up.
What can happen in forty-five minutes with a shooter?
Well, the average incident is over in eighteen. So the SWAT team is gonna show up to clean up an incident?
You don't want that. We don't want any incidents. We want them there before it happens. And with that, what, five minutes now is the response time?
Yeah, well, I mean, you're gonna have three special.
Always on.
On at three of the four different schools all the time.
Right.
And I think the biggest thing is, they'll know those schools cold. You know, every nook, every cranny, they'll know exactly where people can hide and where they can't. So it kills me to spend that kind of money, but I remember looking, Chris Moran and I looked at each other and said, God help us if we don't do this and something happens.
I, I, I voted for it. It's for the kids. I, I, I want them all to be safe. I want the schools to be a safe environment for every student in any, in every way possible.
Is Milford High safe?
Absolutely.
You never worried, I mean, you worried you're gonna be made fun of. You know, okay, you're wearing a pink shirt, you're wearing a blue pair of pants, they don't match, eh, okay, that, normal high school.
Truly unsafe as in I was going to be hurt. No, never once in my four years there.
I think that's important, because today, it's a scary thing to send your child to a place where they could get hurt. Some of these schools, when you hear about what they're going through, you know, and there's guns, metal detectors to get into school.
I, I've seen that, I've read about it many times. I, I don't know if I'd like that. I'd, I'd wanna change schools if there was a metal detector. That's when you know it's not safe.
Yeah.
Why would I wanna be there?
There's gotta be a reason. I mean, I was impressed when I went to Milford High, and I had to go up to the administrative wing, and I got stopped. And I had to show an ID, and they had to check for, to find out if I was on the list. You know, and you could sit there and say, okay, that minute and a half that I got held up was annoying. But when you think about it, why wouldn't I want that? It's like on an airplane. Why don't I want security?
Why don't I want TSA? I love TSA. They take care of me. I, I, it's just precautions we have to take. It's sad that we have to do it, but if that's what we have to do, well, continue supporting it.
So now, you started off saying you would represent the population of the schools better than any other candidate. Do you have any challenge for the other candidates, or any question that you'd like everybody to answer?
I'd ask them if they, if they would know what it would feel like to have our, to have parents who don't speak the language, work sixty, eighty-hour weeks to make sure we could live, eat, breathe, play our sports, and how it would feel if you disappointed them. I don't think any of them know that feeling.
Good point. We're coming to the end. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Should vote for me, because I can represent the entire district better than everyone. I believe I'm qualified for the job. I might not have the experience everyone else does. I was born here, I was raised here, I know everyone, and I think that's what's important, and I know I can get the job done.
Well, I appreciate you stepping up, as I appreciate everybody who steps up to help our kids. So thank you, good luck. And as we finish tonight's session, as always, I wanna thank our six loyal viewers. There's nothing more important than picking the right people who are gonna decide what happens, when it happens, and how it happens every day in your children's lives. And for people who say, I don't have kids, well, make no mistake, it still affects you, because it's one of the biggest factors in the value of homes is whether people wanna send their kids to the school system in the town. So every resident of Milford is affected. So please, I beg you, get out and vote, but become informed. Get somehow to listen to a few minutes of each of these candidates, so you can have an informed opinion when you cast your ballot. And as always, to our six loyal viewers, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for having me on.